Well, good morning. It seems like just a short period of time. We were all here last night. Thank you all for coming. This is the initial budget workshop meeting. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I do want to give a heads up. I have a prior commitment at 10:30. So if we're still running at that time, Councilman Adams, I would appreciate if you would take over at that point. We'll have our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item may do so at this time. Anyone wishing to speak in public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. And we'll move to item number one for possible action. Receive the presentation.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I know you heard a lot from me last night, so I'm not going to hog this whole meeting this morning. Angela Manninen is the Boulder City Budget Manager, and she has worked very hard on this whole document that you have. You actually have two books, The White Book and The Black Book. And it's not good guys, bad guys. The White Book is general fund. The Black Book is utility funds. And because they should be reviewed and examined as two separate types of funds, we broke them up into different books. So Angela will do the presentation right now on the general fund.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Angela Manninen. I'm the Budget Manager. Okay. And we'll start with the general fund operating budget for 2021. So the purpose of the city's budget is to present a clear picture to the residents, council, and staff regarding the city's financial direction. It includes summaries of revenues and expenditures, including personnel costs. It provides an overview to the summary of the city's funds. It identifies capital, special projects, and other discretionary spending items. It improves the overall financial tracking mechanisms for the city and provides a tool for heightening management's awareness. Oops. Okay. The strategic plan, the strategic plan goals of the city are to achieve prudent financial stewardship, invest in infrastructure, manage growth and development, promote historic preservation, and sustain a high level of public safety services. Okay. This is the org chart. It's very similar to what it was last year. The difference is we have a lot more advisory committees than we did last year. And also the change in departments, we now have the Administrative Services Department. This is our new executive summary for our governmental funds this year. Has lots of fun facts. It's a great read. Okay. So governmental reserves for fiscal year 2020. Currently, our governmental reserves, our mandatory governmental reserves are fully funded. This includes our emergency capital reserve of $2 million, our operating reserves of 20% for general fund, more cops, and RDA. There's also, the cemetery has a perpetual care fund of currently $330,000. Projected revenues for '21 are very similar to what they were in 2020. Property tax revenues are anticipated to be about the same. The revenue for 2021 includes new leases that were signed during fiscal year 2020. And use of general fund balance of 3.2 million will be used for capital projects for the general fund. This is the property tax rate comparison for the state of Nevada. As you can see, Boulder City is still among the lowest. Where does the general money come from? The general fund money come from? So about $2 million comes from taxes. $2 million comes from license and permits. About 5.2 million comes from intergovernmental, including motor vehicle fuel tax. The consolidated tax is about $12 million, which includes sales tax and liquor tax. So it's about 12 taxes that the state collects and then distributes to the cities and the counties. Charge for services is about $5 million, and of that, over $3 million is for the golf courses. Fines is about .55 million. Leases is over $12 million. So if you look at leases and the consolidated tax, that's 2.3 of our general fund revenues. Use of fund balance, 3.21 million, which will be used for capital improvement projects for the general fund this year. And miscellaneous revenue of .47 million. So our total operating expense, our operating budget for next year will be about $38 million. Where does the general money, general fund money go? So general government is about $7 million, which includes city council, city manager, HR, IT. It's 11 different departments. So municipal court is just under $1 million. Public safety, which is our fire and police and animal control, is $14 million. Public works is right at $6 million. Recreation is a little over $3 million. The golf courses are $3.5 million. And the capital projects for the general fund is $3.35 million, with a total of $38 million for operating expenses. So changes from the prior year budget. It's 1.6 million in contractual salary and benefit increases. This includes the 3% contractual increases every year. And also, there is two police positions that weren't fully funded last year that are fully funded in 2021. The inter-fund reimbursements, the $1,084,500, the amount hasn't changed from last year, but our method of how we're reporting it has changed. So if you see in our enterprise fund, you'll see expense for an inter-fund salary reimbursement, which is, and then in the supporting departments in the general fund, you'll see credits. So you'll see the expense in the enterprise and the credits in the general fund. And this is different from prior year's transfers in, transfers out, which were confusing to residents and many parties. So this is to make it more transparent and clear.
And council.
And council. And just like salary benefits increase, so do contractual obligations increase every year. They usually go up. So about $500,000 for our contract-related expenses goes up. This includes additional audit costs, prisoner housing, a class of comp study. So $500,000 for all our contracts to go from being paid for the general fund. New this year is the VERF, which is the Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. So it's just right about $500,000 for the general fund vehicles. So this is different than when we did in prior years. Prior years, we just allocated a certain amount of money for vehicles. Now we have a fleet advisory committee that actually analyzes all the vehicles and decides what needs to be replaced. And also, each department now is being charged a lease fee. So they pay for their vehicles that way. We did sign new solar contracts last year. So with that, in 2021, there'll be increased solar inspection expenses. But this is directly offset by the revenues because the solar companies will pay us back. Will reimburse us for these expenses. Compensated expenses is about $147,000. This is the $1,000 that's charged to each department for our full-time employee that goes into the compensated absence fund. This fund goes to pay off when people retire or leave the city and have accrued contractual paid time off. So this is how we pay it out, rather than hitting the individual departments. And then also, $120,000 will pay for the 2020 presidential election and the 2021 municipal election. And now I'd like to turn it over to the directors to, huh? Oh, yeah. I'll do that, too. So starting with public works, they will discuss their different budgets.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to point out some of the highlights of our requests this year. We're proposing to reinstate a tree replacement program for, it's mainly for our medians. A couple of years ago, that was removed. So we're asking for the $25,000 to be put back in the budget so we can continue with that maintenance replacement program. And then we also transitioned in the past, the landscape division was covering most of the costs for maintaining the grounds down at the cemetery. So we put that money in the proper place. And then also, there was a couple, what we thought were CIP projects for the municipal, for the cemetery. In fact, they were below that $25,000 threshold. So we are asking for $50,000 to take care of some of those projects, like the exterior wall, the pavilion, and the maintenance building down there. And then continuing with what we started last year of doing more projects in-house. This graph, or this chart here, shows some of the upcoming projects that we've got proposed, and then what we could potentially save by doing in-house management. We're just using a rough number of 20% for those projects. So that's where you come up with the $910,000, just on those projects that we've pointed And that's all I have for mine. Are we doing questions now, or do we want to wait and do them later?
Anyone eager to ask questions?
Okay, I'll ask a question. On the utility service, can I ask you that question?
Yep.
Okay. 5613 is budgeted $825 for 2021, and it was $575 for 2020. And I just wondered what the difference would be.
If you look at the next column to the left, the actual amounts that we have as of January 2nd, we're already at $409,000 for paying for those utility expenses. So working with the finance team, we figured it would be best to adjust for that, because if we continue on that pace, we're going to be right at $820,000.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Bridges?
Yeah, I know you've explained this before, but I, what is the use of fund balance? The term use of fund balance?
Yes, please.
I know you got it.
Good choice, Keegan.
So use of fund is having to use basically our savings account. So it's what's in the fund. So it's money set aside. It's not revenues taken in in the current years, prior year's revenues. Is that?
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other public works questions?
That was fairly easy.
So for the police department, one of the things we've done is we, of course, always look at what we're doing and what we're spending. And the, we cut, of course, where we can, and we have our COLAs and everything else that has to be done. All our areas, we make sure that we can meet all of our adequate funding to meet all of our legal requirements and our obligations and our goals. And one of the things we did do is, I've been doing this for the last two, almost three years, is looking at animal control and how we staff that and how we use staff hours. So one of the things I try to do is, I look at all our different options. You know, can we increase, last thing I want to do is add people. You know, if there's other ways to make efficiencies, and we've tried just about every formula we can think of, volunteers, part-time employees. And in this budget, you'll see, we've really come to the point where the only thing we can really do is take some of our part-time positions and one of them raise it up to a full-time. Trying to keep part-time people in this economy is very, very difficult. We lose people constantly, and we can't keep them. And trying to rely on volunteers is very, very difficult. Many of our volunteers leave for months at a time. So if you, we have a 24-hour, seven-day operation. It's very difficult for our people to keep things going up there. It's a shelter, and they have to take care of the animals up there 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. So what I was finding is, I'd show up, and I'd find people there, our people, and they really working, but they never let me know they were there, which you really can't do. So they were volunteering their time because they care so much. So the staffing hours were increased at animal control, again. You'll see that in there. We've been working with the more cops and crime prevention tax, trying to optimize that money that we're getting that can only be used for certain things, and take pressure off the general fund and move more and more of the support for those positions into these funds, such as equipment and other things. Before, it was all coming out of the general fund. So what had happened is when those accounts were established in 2007, you had X number of dollars. Well, as the economy went bad, that money dropped off. Well, the positions didn't leave. They stayed. As the money started coming back, of course, there's been inflation. So last year was the first year, in real dollars, we got back to where the city was in 2007. It's taken that long to get back there. So now, we've been working pretty hard on moving things from general fund into those positions. And they're becoming much, they really should be entirely self-supporting under those. And each one of our lines in our budget, I tried to tie to appropriate strategic plan goals to make sure that each one of those things meet those goals.
Questions or comments?
I'll just make the comment with regards to, you know, part-time work versus full-time work. I mean, obviously, we have to be very sensitive when it comes to the budget, but I know personally, in all the work I've done, when you have part-time workers, like you said, it is hard to keep because it kind of does just ask that they have another job or that, you know. So it always does keep in flux. And I think absolutely making sure that we maintain quality work is important. And if a full-time position helps with that, I think that's good. I think it's good for the worker. I think it's good for us. But, you know, obviously, it's always something that we have to keep in balance because money is finite. But I certainly think that trying to squeeze it out of the workers is not always the best way to go about that.
With the more cops tax, mostly for the edification of the public, that is an additional sales tax that is paid in Clark County. It is designed to increase the number of officers available. And there is a caveat in there that if we were to substitute that money for money that we had been spending in the past, we risk losing all of the more cops funding. Is that correct?
I don't know what the consequences are for supplanting. I'm really not, it's not clear. There was a supplanting that was allowed before I came here, was allowed for two years when the economy got really, really bad. So the one thing the sheriff impressed upon me when I talked to him about this was that it's more cops. So if you look at Boulder City, if you take our general fund and contracted, we have two contract positions. We have one at the school, and we have one that does the Boulder City Conservation Easement. We are at 1.8 officers per thousand. 1.8 officers per thousand is the average for cities between 10,000 and 25,000 in the United States. The average for police officers in cities is 2.4. If you add the more cops and crime prevention people, we hit 2.4. So what more cops did for us is, without adding a general fund to positions, brought us up from 1.8 to 2.4, which is exactly what that law was supposed to do. And as the sheriff told me over and over again, it's more cops, not the same number. So it's doing exactly what it's supposed to do. What we're trying to do now, and Angela's been great at this, is making sure that those funds, those positions are supported by that fund. And we don't take money from the general fund to support those positions, because that the intent was those positions would be self-supporting. It wasn't like a grant, you know, where the city takes over more and more and more and more of the position as the years go on. They're supposed to be fully funded under those positions. So then we're slowly but surely getting there.
And there is a potential, I mean, should the economy take a dip and sales tax revenue falls, that funding for the more cops could also fall with that reduction.
It could. And there's no restriction on the city augmenting those positions. So you could have a position that's 50% more cops and 50% general fund if you chose. There's nothing that prevents that. It's the other way around that's not allowed. You can't turn around and say, well, we got all this more cops money, so we're going to reduce the support on the general fund, and we're going to reduce general fund positions. So what we do, and this was the legislature really liked, is we bring our newest person, that's the most volatile taxing we have, when you have taxes coming in. We put our newest people there. And the reason we do is, we have an economic downturn. We have to lay people off. Our contracts require our junior people go first. So that's where the funding would go away, and those are the people that would leave. And that's kind of how we have, and the legislature really liked that. The original concept, and they realized it was a fallacy, is that you would get hired, it was a 20-year law, and you'd spend 20 years being funded by more cops. Well, the law requires that at least, it's either 8% or 85% of your people are in uniform in marked units. In Boulder City, it's 100%. We have nobody that's not in uniform, not out on the street, which they really liked. So we have no supervisors paid for it. We have no detectives. We don't have things like that, no, it's, everybody is in the field in a marked unit. So, and they don't stay there in many agencies. So you imagine Metro, which has several hundred, they go to different divisions, different places. So there's no way they could stay under more cops. And they realized that, and they changed the law last year in the legislature, so.
All right. Thank you. One of the figures that I look at each week are the number of calls, you know, in the Boulder City Review, on the cover page, they'll have a breakdown there. And when I see the number of animal control calls each week, I'm wondering what else they have time for, like eating, or sleeping, or?
That's one of the, again, the animal control calls are not handled exclusively by animal control officers. When they're not here, the patrol guys handle them. So those are the kind of calls that are just categorized that way so we can say, well, what are we really spending? How much time and effort do we really spend on animal events? So it could be something that the police would normally handle anyway, just because an animal's involved, but because the animal control officers can only do so much under the statutes. So some of it has to fall to police officers. But one of the things we were looking at, again, is optimizing hours. And the only way to add more hours is either move in overtime where you have to add a human. And there's just no other way. It's like sand in a bucket, you know? You can't make new sand. You can move it from one bucket to the other. So we've tried everything we can think of. I've looked at how much overtime we can spend. And it's not so much money, it's how much you can work somebody. And if you get to a certain percentage, this is a Boeing formula, if you get to a certain percentage, you've got to hire more people because you're working your people too much. And while overtime money can be very efficient because you're not adding more people with more benefits and all the stuff that goes with the human, there comes a point where you can't keep people working this much. In our business, there is no formulas, but truckers and all that, there are formulas that say you can only work so much, and that's it. So our folks have been pretty maxed out. What they've been doing is, and the volunteers have been wonderful, but it's very, very difficult to keep part-time folks there. And some of our part-time folks have multiple part-time jobs, and their other part-time job pays more. And they're told, if you don't spend more time here, we're going to fire you from that part-time job. So they trim our hours down so they can go do this. And it's very difficult.
With the animal shelter itself, you know, talking with some folks, like the SeeSpot Run folks, they've expressed to me a concern about the fact that there's no video out there.
There is no.
Oh, okay.
I bought them a portable system the other, about three weeks, four weeks ago. And so the system is, as we move into the security, where we're going to be adding security cameras to different facilities around the city and integrating this, the system they have now is designed now to become animal monitoring equipment. So they can have an animal in quarantine, and they can look on their cell phone and see how the animal's doing instead of coming down to the shelter at 9 o'clock at night. So it's a portable system, and it's really easy to use, and you can use it on your cell phone. But it's eight cameras up there now. And as soon as we go to the improved security systems, they'll be getting that. Plus, it's going to get fenced up there. We're having some difficulty, we found some people actually inside the facility when they came to work in the morning. So we're going to have to fence that whole thing up there, and Public Works is working on that. So once that's all done, it'll be properly monitored.
And you mentioned quarantine. Do they have the ability now to quarantine an animal?
They do. It's still really difficult. So when I first got here, there was a portion of the animal shelter that wasn't air-conditioned. And so that's our air condition, so they can use the whole building before they really couldn't in the summer. So they have a room that they're using for that. So we're looking at whether or not we need to look at the capital improvement plan and whether we need to expand some of the building space within the confines, like that patio area out there. Right now, they're pretty good. And they do have the quarantine area, that's now that large area, they can put them in individual cages out there. And it's okay, it works all right, but it's not optimum. What should be there, should, needs to be improved. But again, everything is evaluate, look at what else we can do, evaluate a little bit more. The last thing we want to do is come out and say, give us more money.
And we appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Holdup?
I had one. It's more of a line budget item, and it looks like it's like this across the board. So I'm not sure who wants to answer this, but under the police with the overtime purrs and the overtime non-purrs, I noticed that those numbers have flip-flopped, and there's a negative number in there, and I was just wondering if someone could explain that.
This is one of those things where I scratched my head when I came here. I said, all the money's coming out of this line that says overtime, non-purrs, but there's no money there. The money's in the other account. So there's purzable overtime and non-purzable overtime. So that's, purzable means that's money that's included in the purr system. So if a guy gets, Bryce will have to correct me if I'm wrong here. If a guy's at home, we call him into work, that's callback overtime, and that's purzable. If it's shift extension overtime, it's not purzable. And so that's, but the money is in one account, but, and that's probably the best way I can describe it. It was kind of a head-scratcher to me, too, because there's never, I look back many, many years, and it's always been set up this way.
Okay. So you moved more money to the overtime non-purrs. So that's for non, that's for shift extension? Yeah. So they'll get overtime, but they won't get purzable benefits with it. So we won't pay into their purrs. So more, with contracts changing, less and less overtime is allowed to be purzable. So if someone's been in their position a long time, they probably are grandfathered in an old contract, so they have purzable overtime. But most new overtime is not purzable. So that's why you're seeing the switch. Okay.
Long overdue switch. Thank you.
And when you refer to contracts, are you talking about the labor agreements? Councilman Adams?
I just wanted to clarify, purrs, it's not so much the contracts, it is purrs itself. So higher date of, for instance, 2008, they no longer allowed certain types of purrs on certain types of overtime. And that's really the driver's higher date, depending upon that. And of course, the further we get away from, for instance, 2008, employees that retire will have less purzable overtime.
Thank you.
I guess I'll just comment on, with regards to an ISO room, an isolation room for animal control. You know, having some experience working at the animal hospital, it is absolutely important that we have a real ISO room, not a makeshift one, not one that we can kind of get by because, you know, you're putting every other life that's there, of those animals, potentially in jeopardy when we don't have that. It's not that it, it's not that it can't be done in certain situations that you can make sure and be, so I'm not trying to question their ability to control the situations that they have to deal with now. But it should never be an excuse for us to, to say that, oh, we can, we can make do here and there, because there are, there are real needs that these animals need. And, you know, if there's any, if there's any animal control out there, animal shelter service, that deserves the support, it's absolutely ours. So I just want to make that very clear, that we should be looking to make those types of improvements, because it's better not just for us, it's better for our loved ones, literally, because you never know when your dog might get out and might get, come into contact with something, and you want to be sure that they're treated, that they're healthy and safe from, or any other animal that might be there, so.
You and I agree 100% on that.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chief.
Can I make the switch? How do I switch this?
One to the, yeah, the blank one.
Oh, okay. All right. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. I want to start off by thanking the council and the citizens. We just got notified yesterday that our new fire engine that was ordered last year will be delivered tomorrow. So it'll probably take a couple of weeks to get all the radios and everything in service, but we finally get that. I also want to start off by saying this is just a preliminary look for me. I've been here for two and a half weeks. And so when we come forward in the March meeting, maybe.
We're expecting an awful lot from me.
I get that. So, so overall, we disappeared there. Our budget's showing about a $14,500 decrease in our operating side of the budget. On the other side, an overtime cost we're requesting about a little over $70,000. That's not in new money, that's just so that the budget better reflects what's actually being, being spent historically. Another thing that we're doing to try to tackle that is, the reserve program in the fire department is almost nonexistent. So we've already started the process of rebuilding that process back up. Those reserves are part-time employees, and so they can help offset that. So we believe once we get that reserve program built back
So we believe once we get that reserve program built back up, that overtime line item will go down significantly. That is going to take a little bit of time, as we have to recruit them and train them. So we do have five more starting an academy in, in a couple of weeks, so that's going to help us a lot. We also have the three firefighters that were approved last year, they've been hired, and they've started to contribute to the service we add. We're also looking to submit an AFG grant, an assistance to firefighter grant, through the Department for Homeland Security. All the air packs that they have right now are reaching the end of their service life. That's a high-dollar item, and so we're hoping to be able to get this grant. If we do that, the grant will pay for 95% of it. So the due date for submission is middle of March, and we wouldn't, we won't hear back till probably October. And we were also notified by our EMS billing company that the Medicare reimbursement rate is going to go up a little bit, so there's going to be a little bit more revenue there, hopefully. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
You had mentioned the reserve program.
Yes, sir.
In looking at staffing for communities our size, which they usually break it down 10,000 to 25,000 population, it looked to me, when I was looking at some numbers, that it's very common to have reserve personnel on fire departments for communities our size. I think the number that I saw was something like almost three per thousand, excuse me, three per 10,000. So you said you have five in the, in the academy now?
Yes, sir. And so I actually travel the country, and by the way, fire departments, it's one of the things that I've done for a long time. And combination departments actually vary across the country. Some have two, some have a ton. We figured that we probably need about 18 here to, to be able to do what we need them to do, to offset that overtime costs. Right now, there was two when I showed up. They had five that were already in the pipeline, that were serving as EMTs, but they're not fully trained as firefighters, and we need them to be fully trained. And so that's what this first academy is going to do. But like I said, our goal was to try to get about 18. I think if we can get 18, that would allow us to have, to cover for all those vacations and sick leaves and injury leaves right now that are being covered solely by overtime. So we really believe that's going to be able to take that down a lot.
Yeah, I, I think there were, again, the numbers I saw, a quarter of the communities in that range were completely volunteer fire departments. They had no paid personnel. So I know that's, Boulder City's been away from that type of arrangement for quite some time now, but again, volunteer firefighters are still a valuable resource for any community, and I, I think that's important, that we keep that program going.
Absolutely. And from visiting other fire departments, they talked about how legendary Boulder City Fire Reserve Program has been. I mean, if you look across the country, there's fire chiefs and fire officers across the country that started here. The valley is full of them. And so they're, they're proud of that. It's just something happened, it's, it's, it's almost gone, we're going to bring it back.
And I do realize, you know, you just mentioned that there's a number of former reservists that are now on departments in the valley. That makes your job difficult, turnover-wise, but, you know, I, I think that's just the nature of the business.
Absolutely.
And I, I realize it puts pressure on constantly having to train new personnel, but again, it's a very valuable resource for a community this size.
And I've been on the other side. I was the department that stole people, so now I'm on the, this side, so.
There you go.
We'll figure out how, how to save them, so.
Karma, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Madam City Clerk, I, I believe you're up.
Mine's pretty simple. The city clerk's budget historically has varied quite a bit every other year due to the cost of municipal elections, and so we had to increase our admin budget by $120,000 to conduct the June 2021, 2021 election. And also, money is built in to cover the cost for any proposed ballot questions. Although June 2021 is our last municipal election, there'll still be money budgeted for ballot questions, because the county will discontinue charging us for the cost of the machines and the cost of their staff, but we will have to pay a certain amount of, for pages that are included in the ballot, but it will be reduced significantly. And the other reduction was for our technical line item, because when we budgeted for municide code, that was to have the project done, and of course, the ongoing costs will be nowhere near that much, and the project came in much lower than anticipated, and those were the only significant changes.
Thank you. Questions or comments? With the elections, we beat the state legislature by about a year or so in moving to national election schedule?
We had already begun the process, and so what had happened was, when we had candidate filing, we had already, the candidates had already signed the papers. They changed that law, and Henderson and Vegas are no longer holding municipal elections, but just because of legal concerns, and we were already in the middle of our process, we, they left us out of that bill. So they kind of had to just exempt us out of it.
Yeah, we, we had started the process prior to the legislature even meeting.
Yes, it was done. We had a, it was codified already in our code, and so it would cause legal concerns, because we were saying, you're running for a three-year, seven-month term, and I don't know how they managed to do that to the other cities, but they were told, you're done.
I believe they, what they did is, we reduced the terms from the standard four years. I believe in the other jurisdictions, or what the legislature did, was to increase it beyond the four-year terms.
Yes.
In order to do that rollover.
That's correct, but what was interesting about that was, in a former legislative session, I want to say it was back in 2012, 11 or 12, they said that if you moved your election cycles to align with even years, you were not allowed to extend terms, you could only shorten them. So they contradicted themselves, you know, seven years later.
Not the state legislature.
Yes. So that was, so I, I've spent a lot of time on the phone with the Secretary of State explaining that, and so, you know, we were exempted out, because we were, our process was done.
In addition to moving to an election cycle where turnout tends to be much higher, the benefit of that was, as you sort of mentioned, the election department now is picking up much more of the total, the county is paying much more of the total than we did in the past. Is that correct?
That is correct. When we conducted our municipal election the last two times, they charged us, charged us for every post-it note, the use of their machines, the trucks. Some of our costs were direct, that we had paid anyway, but they had conducted that audit, I want to say in 2015, and discovered they were undercharging us. Our contract states that we will reimburse for those costs, but historically, they never nickled and dimed us like they did. I mean, and I, that's understandable, they're just trying to recoup their costs.
Well, I think they were trying to make a point as well.
That's true. We will have to renegotiate that contract with the county. It's been in place for many, many years. It's, it's outdated, so that will be coming forward shortly.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Holder?
I just had one. There, I had a question about the printing, because it goes from like zero in 2018, $71 in 2019, and then it's three, $3,600 this year, and $7,000 budgeted.
I'll take, I'll take that.
Okay.
But it's changed.
Yeah.
So we're having more staff, we're better able to track our contracts, so everything which is going into central services before, and if you see the central services budget is going down, because we're actually, the costs for the departments are now going to the departments. So we're able to take our printing contract and see which department it goes to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving now to the Finance Department.
Good morning. Diane Pelletier, Boulder City Finance Director. Oh, she's got it up there. I'm not asking for any positions next year. I just wanted to say that upfront. We have minimal changes. We do have some contractual increases for the auditors. That was a four-year contract, and each year they have a slight escalator. So that's in the budget. We also increased our financial advisors' potential money for that, because depending on, you know, things that happen, we may need their help more than we used them in the past year. We have a request for new software for contract tracking, and it's called Ion Wave, and it's $5,400. And right now, I guess we track contracts with Excel, and I'm understanding that this software will, will provide more abilities to do reports, and will be, the purchasing manager's asked for it, because he feels it'll help him do his job better. We have an increase in training costs, because we have more people on staff who have certifications that have to go to training each year, so we slightly increased that line. And I was so busy working on everybody else's budget, that we wanted to look into cost factors, because one of our goals, another aggressive goal we have next year is to create a budget document, because right now you have the Excel spreadsheets in the binders, which we'll still do, but we want to create a booklet at the end that would look kind of like the annual report booklet, that would show each department and have pretty pictures. So we're looking at software to do that, and we also would like to create our comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFER in-house. And Rebecca Gillis, who's our finance manager, has done that, and where she came from, and she feels that after a year, almost two years under her belt, she'll be able to take that out. So we're looking at the cost of that software. We don't expect it to be much, and we do expect possibly to reduce the audit contract once we implement it, so there'll be some cost savings there. But we'll be looking at that, and hopefully we'll have those numbers by the March 11th meeting. And that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilman Adams?
Yeah, with regards to the Ion Wave, is that a one-time purchase, or is that something, a service that we are, would want to be paying for annually, or?
I believe that's a one-time.
It's a, it's a software. It's annual.
Oh, it's, all right. It's an annual.
It'd be an annual software. Okay, and so is this, is the $5,400, is that, is there a kind of a purchase endpoint, and then there's like a subscription fee that's less, or is that the annual cost? That's flat $5,400 across. So that's a flat, okay. I'm just wanting to clarify to make sure I have that.
You mentioned using Excel to, to track things? Yeah.
Excel is a wonderful tool.
Oh, it is. It is. Until you try and make it part of your management system.
Yes, yes.
Only, only finance director would, would really cheer on Excel, I think.
I love Excel.
Oh, it's a great tool, but it tends to do things that you would rather not have it do occasionally, like just go away.
Yes, yes.
Also, you mentioned with the CAFER that you're doing it in-house?
Well, the document has been done by the auditors over the last several years. I believe when the staffing was severely reduced in the Finance Department, the auditors would actually put, you know, create the document for the city. And that happened the last, the two years I've been here. But the goal is to purchase the software, and then have us create all the, all the pages of the document. I mean, they still audit everything, but we give them the stuff to audit, and then they put together the book. And this would allow us to create the document.
Okay, so again, the reason I'm asking, when you say we would do it in-house, I think that's the law, that we have to have an outside audit firm do.
Oh, yeah. No, no, the audit still happens. But we would be creating the book in-house.
You just startled me a little bit with that comment. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Holder?
I just had one about employees and staff. I know, because it's changed a lot, so I haven't really kept track of how many staff you do have now.
Nine.
Nine, okay. But you did, and you're running one job right now, I believe, right? Didn't you lose a staff?
Yes, because we've had a staff promotion.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Pelletier. Parks and Rec, Mr. Hall.
It seems like Groundhog Day, we were just here last night, five hours ago, six hours ago?
Feels like it.
Yeah, it does. In an effort to achieve financial stewardship and stipulated in the Boulder City strategic plan, the Parks and Rec Department has put forward limited requests for this year's budget. You know, we, we as a department are living within our means with no significant increases in our 13 budgets. However, we have, except for the anticipated salaries and benefits, the council-approved golf course, management contract increases, utility creases, and the newly established VERF and compensated absence account. And over the past few years, staff has been investing in the infrastructure in our town, as stipulated in the strategic plan, and for many years, money was not available, and many of our recreation facilities became run down. We're looking into the possibility of replacement of old play equipment at our various parks, where replacement parts, when you try to get them to replace a certain section, are nonexistent, because the equipment is so old. Other improvements include gazebo improvements, construction of outdoor pickleball courts on existing basketball courts, and the possible installation of shade structures for our children at, at some play areas. We're trying to improve the overall safety, usefulness, and appearance of our, our park system. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments?
When we talk about shade structures, do some of those include trees?
In conjunction with the trees, yes.
Okay, just.
Yeah, we just put some shade structures down at Veterans Memorial Park, over the bleacher area there, and we're working on a, a plan right now to put a shade structure over the baseball field, and I believe that's already done, isn't it? No? And so we, we're constantly trying to upgrade our facilities.
In reference to shade structures, I've made this suggestion in the past, that we reach out to our partners in the solar energy production business, and see if they might be willing to donate panels, as they did for the structure across the street. I realize that a lot of the activities that are done, baseball fields and whatnot, often occur at night, but there is possibility of battery storage. You know, in my discussions with them, especially where we have several projects that are getting ready to start construction, they said, you know, if they had to order 20 or 50 additional panels out of the thousands that they're ordering, that might not be a burden on them to donate that. We are clean, green Boulder City. That is energy that's available, and I would like to see if we can look into doing something like that. I also understand that baseballs might not be the best thing to use against solar panels, but there may be other ways to make that work.
That's a good idea, and the, the structures that we're putting up at the ballfields are a mesh system, okay? It's not a hard system like you see over here, and the application of solar panels on that mesh system would not work, because it's not strong enough.
Well, I guess that's what I'm getting at, is in the design, maybe we could look to do things like solar panels.
We can look into that, yeah.
Something that came up when we went over the STANTEC report, the review of all the facilities, there was information in that report regarding some of the capital improvement items that had been discussed last year, such as the cart barn at Boulder Creek, where the STANTEC report is saying the structure that's being used is in good condition, and yet it is on the project list for replacement at a cost, I believe, of $800,000. So I think we're going to have to go back into some of those capital improvement items in light of the STANTEC report, and make an evaluation on whether they need to be done, or is that money we can put to work elsewhere? So that's not just your department. I think that applies across the board, that that STANTEC report has brought out new information on where we may want to devote resources.
Yes, it has, yeah.
Okay. And, you know, we talked at length about... And, you know, we talked at length about the pool last night. That seems to be the number one project as far as dollar amount goes for the Parks and Rec Department. You know, as I say, we talked at length about that last night, so.
We're trying our best to keep the doors open. It's getting harder and harder to do that. I have a great staff down there and we're, we're working real hard to, because mechanical systems are failing and we're just trying to keep it, keep the doors open, so.
Okay. Councilwoman Bridges?
Yeah, in the park improvements, I'm curious, when we were down at the National League of Cities Conference, there were a lot of vendors talking about playground equipment that goes beyond just the needs of children in terms of multiple uses for adults, people with different disabilities and so on. I wonder if you're looking into any of those in addition to the kind of typical equipment that we see now?
Actually, the trend in the United States is, you know, ADA equipment and also music. If you look at Bicentennial Park, we put out a nice little, I'm sure you can hear it from your house.
I can tell you, it's like having wonderful wind chimes in my backyard.
Yes, and it's being used in a lot of our parks. We're looking for producing playground equipment that is available for kids with disabilities and we do have a couple issues. Also, we just recently renovated the Splash Park Playground down at Veterans Memorial Park. And one of the things, you know, a lot of the parents do is they bring their kids to the park and there's nothing for them to do. Well, we decided to put some exercise equipment with the playground equipment so parents can exercise down there and watch their kids play on the play equipment so you're killing two birds with one stone.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Fuldah?
I just, I got a question. I just noticed that our SafeKey program is more than our tiny tots and our youth sports combined. And I'm just curious, I, I thought that that was a before-school and after-school program and just curious why the high expense of it.
Well, there's two, the SafeKey program is divided into two areas, I believe, and one is SafeKey during the regular school year, which is a morning and afternoon program. It's a supervised program where people can drop off their kids six o'clock in the morning. They are, they're brought to school, after school, they show up and then activities are done. Then we have a summer parks program, which is their summer end of it. And I believe we combined the two, didn't we?
It's one.
Yeah, so we combined the two and that's why you're seeing that.
Okay, thank you.
And parents do pay a fee for participation in that program?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one more. In terms of the SafeKey program, I'm wondering if anybody's looking at cannibalization from that program into the new daycare center that they're building right next to Oak Lane Academy? Because it seems like it might be attempting to fulfill that same demand.
Yeah. One of the beauties of a SafeKey program located at the school is that when a, when a parent who is a working parent drops off their kid, they know that the child is taken care of from the time they drop them off. They're brought to school, so they go to school and then they're brought, after school, they show up at the SafeKey program and they're picked up at six o'clock at night. So it's a constant program. They don't have to transport them somewhere. It's a very convenient program for the parents, working parents and the children.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Mr. Mays, Community Development?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Michael Mays, your Community Development Director. Wanted to do on a couple of highlights for community development for fiscal year '21. Angela touched on this earlier in the presentation, but with respect to third-party inspection services, you will see a significant increase for utilization of third-party, which is a reflection of the anticipated three solar projects moving forward in fiscal year '21. Now, what our code stipulates is because these solar projects tend to be far away from the center of the community and they typically require a dedicated inspector on site, eight to 10 hours each day. Our code says that the contractors are required to enter into an agreement with the city that provides for a dedicated inspector on site that they pay for upfront. And we utilize our existing third-party consultant, CSG, to handle these inspection services. And so these additional costs through professional services will be 100% funded by the developers. In addition, you'll see continued support for historic preservation efforts through the utilization of third-party support. This ties back directly to the Historic Preservation Committee goals for historic preservation activities over the next couple of years. And so we have put money in the budget for third-party support to continue the goals in fiscal year '21. We also are proposing reinstating the building official position, the full-time building official position within the department. Prior to 2017, the city had a permanent building official. In 2017, with that person's leaving the city, the city entered into a contract with a third-party firm, it was PREI, and they have been providing those services for the city since then. They've informed the city that in fiscal year '21, they would be ending providing those services. And so with any position, we did a reevaluation of what would provide the services that the customers of our city expect in the most cost-effective manner. And based on an evaluation of either hiring a full-time permanent position or continuing third-party services, it would be more cost-effective to hire the full-time position. It not only provides full-time building official services to support citizen and customer inquiries and, as I mentioned, would be the lowest-cost option, but it would also be offset by the current dollars that we spend on the third-party services today. And it would also help to further our objectives to improve customer service. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions regarding our proposed budget for fiscal year '21.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilwoman Hoskins?
Yes, I've had several people being, discussing the fact that, you know, we didn't have a permanent position for that and that they weren't quite sure that the individual that we had was as well-versed as someone who might live here and actually know what the codes were. So I'm happy to see that.
And that is a change, right? I believe it was two years ago that the decision was made to outsource all of the inspection services. So we're taking a different view now and trying to bring that back in-house?
No. So there's a distinction between the building official and our ongoing inspection services. So as part of our evaluation a year ago with the building inspector position, pre-2017, we had a building inspector as a full-time position and building official as a full-time position. And with last year's assessment upon the retirement of the building inspector, because of the fluctuations of inspections that occur on an annual basis, in that assessment, it was determined that it would be more cost-effective to have those services provided by a third-party. The building official is the individual who oversees building permit activities, actually oversees the use of the third-party consultants for our daily inspection activities. That individual also does conduct inspections in addition to the third-party services. But one of their more important roles is being available for our contractors and residents to answer questions and help them through the building permit process. That individual also is required per NRS if the city wants to enforce our building code requirements. NRS stipulates that we are required to have someone with the expertise in that role, whether it's third-party or a permanent position. So that's the distinction between the two positions. So we would continue utilizing third-party services for daily inspections, both inspections within the community and with the solar projects.
I don't know if it's working out well for them, but I did hear that North Las Vegas is allowing for videos to be done by homeowners on some routine things like water heater replacements, saving the time for an inspector to go out and look at it. They're able to do that via video. As I say, I don't know if it's working out for them, but it's certainly a complaint I hear from some folks, not a constant complaint, but waiting for an inspection, you know, things have been completed or at least someone feels they've been completed, they'd like to move on to the next phase, but they have to wait for the inspector to come and take a look at it. And sometimes on a job, that can be dozens of inspections being required. So whether that works out, as I say, I don't know, but anything we can do, I think, to move that process along is a good thing and still maintain the integrity of our building codes. With regard to the historic preservation, you have the third-party consultant support for preservation efforts. Is that part of the grant money from the State Historic Preservation Office?
No, that is anticipating money that the city would spend within the next fiscal year. Obviously, we will continue to closely watch grant opportunities through SHPO and how that could help to augment the monies that we're proposing for the budget to be able to successfully implement the Historic Preservation Committee goals.
Okay. Because SHPO does get new money each year through the, I believe it's the National Conservation Corporation now. It's money that comes from oil and gas leases, surcharge on those leases. So I know you've been doing it, you and your department have been instrumental in getting the certified local government status for us. There's money out there that can help with this, so appreciate your efforts in doing so. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Mays.
Thank you.
Judge Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor, Councilmembers Victor Miller and the Judge here in Boulder. And I want, if I can indulge a minute, to make a public announcement in that on the 25th of February, we have a graduation in our Drug Court program and three individuals who have seriously and significantly changed their lives and I'm very proud of these people. So all are welcome to come and celebrate their recovery and what's going on in their lives and the changes that they've made.
What time is that?
That is at 5:00. And I know it's a council meeting night, so, but we're done by, in time to get over here, as long as you don't have a RDA meeting. And Mayor McManus has indicated he'll be there, he'll say a few words for us. I think if you're still available, we look forward to that.
Always happy to attend the graduations.
Thank you. The budget, the, we're a little different in the court from the, from the departments in that we're a separate branch of government and we look to the city to fund our, our general fund needs, but we have, because we're a separate branch, the legislature has given us some other funding sources through some special funds. There's an administrative fund, there's a facility fund, and a, what they call a collection fund. So we look primarily to the, to the city for, for, those funds can fund such things as equipment, technology, and, and facilities. So we, we managed to get by that, but primarily we look to the, to the city for our employers to pay our payroll. So that's where we look and we're, have no changes in that this year, other than the contractual raises that have already been put in place. On my slide here, we did notice as we do our annual budget reviews that our Marshall Division had, is 10 years old and the equipment that we had in there is, is reaching or has passed its, its age. For example, the vests, the safety personal vests that they wear have a, have a lifespan of seven years and they're, they're approaching 10 years. So we're, we're looking to, to take care of those. Also, our equipment, such as our scanners at the courthouse are, are starting to fail. So, but we can take care of, we've looked at the budget, we can take care of that within our budget with our, with our administrative fees. So, so that's not really something that's an issue or concern. Another is that this has to do with the Drug Court. There's national training that takes place and that is important for our Drug Court team to go to. And so that's something that we, we look to and we've got for our, this year, the, we're, we're able to do that through our, our facility fees and also through the assistance of the Administrative Office of the Courts in Nevada who provide for my, the cost of my training in that way. I would like to mention though, because we have those funds, the legislature currently is, in the past legislature and this next legislature, they're looking at some changes in, in the way citations are handled in the state of Nevada and that could affect the, the funding of the courts because it affects the, the way fines and fees are collected in the state. So we don't know what that is going to be. It's interesting that the legislature has put together a mechanism to help fund the courts through these fees and now they're changing the, the way, the way those things are, those fines and fees are collected so that those come down, then these fines and fees that are connected to it are also going to come down. I had a meeting two weeks ago with Chairman Jaeger of the Judiciary Committee in the Assembly and indicated an awareness of that, but not with any, there's an interim study committee that's going on about that. But I hope that I've explained a little bit about how we fund the court and appreciate your, your input into that, our finances. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions or comments? Councilman Adams?
I think Drug Court, I think, is an, absolutely a wonderful program. I personally have friends who have been, had success through that program, not necessarily ours, but through others throughout the country. You kind of spoke a little bit about, you know, you have fines and stuff like that that help to fund this, help fund your, the municipal court. And yeah, it is kind of a tricky thing because on the one hand, you know, it's like you don't want to create fines and fees just so that you can support something that necessarily, you know, if you, obviously the goal should always be that, the way our system should work is that as people go through this, they're, you know, rehabilitation, right? The people are getting better, that we don't have so many crimes, we should be reducing that, but then say, well, now we need more money because we have people committing less crimes, you know, because we want to keep up with that. So it's, it's, that's a tricky balance and because you don't want to just arbitrarily look to increasing fees to try and counterbalance that sort of a thing. And I'm not saying that that's what we're doing here, but so I understand why the legislation would be wanting to look at how these types of things are, are figured out. And yeah, that might mean that a lot of things are going to have to change, but I'm hoping that that means that it's for the better for all of us, for the community, so that we continue to have a safer one. So it's, yeah, it's going to be, changes are likely going to happen, hopefully, I think. But it's something that we're going to have to all live with and I hope, I hope that it's for the better.
I just hope that it doesn't put a lot of burden back on the city. I just hope that it doesn't put a lot of burden back on the city. The way it is now, as you can see by the pie charts, we're, we bring in about 2% of the income into the city, and we spend about 2% of, you know, so we're kind of take care of ourselves the way it is now. But hopefully, the changes, you know, but if the changes make difference, we'll be back, and hopefully, they'll address it. But the thing that sometimes is frustrating with the legislature is their unfunded mandates when they add costs and don't provide a way to do that. But that's something we can look at in the future if we need to.
I think, too, that, you know, there needs to be the recognition of programs like the Drug Courts, that, you know, people may say, well, just throw them in jail and, you know, let them figure it out. I think we're paying somewhere around $100 a day if we do send somebody to jail. So it's not a cheap bargain putting people in jail either. And, you know, if we can help a person get back on their feet and save money, that seems like a worthwhile thing. And I think, as Councilman Adams said, you know, there's a recognition now that somebody who may be working in a minimum wage job, if they get something as a traffic ticket, you know, that can be a real burden on them. They don't show up for court, bench warrant gets issued, cost keeps going up and up and up. It's a way to take somebody out of society sometimes with the way these things work. And I know that you're conscious of that, and again, the get tough on crime thing is worthwhile. We don't want criminals, you know, wreaking havoc on our community, but a lot of times, helping a person get back on their feet's a lot cheaper way to go and certainly better for them.
Well, one of the maxims that we have in the Drug Court program nationally is jail is not treatment. And so it doesn't, they come out the same person they went in, they're going to make the same decisions that they made going in, and which is going to put them back in jail or back in trouble, and then costing the citizens more money for incarceration, but also cost of enforcement, the cost of the crime, because most of these things result in damages or theft in the community to the citizens. And so we can resolve those issues, then that's the plan, is let's find out the problem, solve the problem, as opposed to just being tough and then just creating the turnstile justice, and that doesn't work. And I think we've tried that, you know, decades past, and it didn't work. So now we can do something, we can help people. And frankly, if I can say, it's a very satisfying part of, my job is more satisfying now than it was 15 years ago, because I can see people change, I can see people reunited with their families, reunited with their children, reunited, you know, with work, and be, the satisfaction that comes to them to be productive citizens is amazing. We do have, you mentioned about the traffic and not paying the fines and getting, we have opportunities for people to do community service, and we have moratoriums to get the warrants quashed if they come in. I work with everybody that comes in, so that, because we found through the scientific studies that for many, many people, three days in jail destroys their lives. So many people are paycheck to paycheck, three days, you've lost your job, you go to jail for three days, you've lost your job, then you've lost the place to live because you can't pay the rent, and the whole house of cards collapses. So we make a sincere effort to try and make sure that we don't put people in that position. They just, you know, we contact people, we give many, many opportunities, because that's not what a traffic ticket's about, destroying your life, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Councilwoman Hoskins?
Yes. Yesterday, I attended the Workforce Connection meeting, and they were talking about working with different courts. Do we do that? Do we place anyone, or can we do that?
Absolutely. We've had great success with the One Stop down here at the library, providing jobs, they help with resumes, and they've trained people. We have somebody who's graduating this, next time, who's been trained as a medical coder. So she'll work for doctors and doing their coding. We've had young men trained in heating and air conditioning, and that's a career, they're given a career. We try to make people, part of the program is, let's move you out of a job and give you a career where there's benefits, where there's a future, and the One Stop and Workforce Connections have been just invaluable in helping us to have that.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
You bet.
Councilwoman Bridges?
Yeah, I have a question. Does the donation contribution from Sunrise Rotary show up on the budget, or how does that work in terms of the money being used to pay for certain parts of the Drug Court program? And is that a separate, is that all kept separate?
That is, that is kept separate, but is gone. So Sunrise Rotary gave us, like, seed money to get the program going, and then we get a grant from the state of Nevada for $30,000 a year that's in an account somewhere. And these people could help you tell you where that is. And it's all numbers, you know, they start, they start talking about numbers. But the, so we get that, and we have to file reports with the state showing where that money is spent. And then the last donation we got from the Rotary was probably three years ago, and they made it conditioned on a matching grant, basically, to the city, that the city would match. It was $25,000. So built into the budget three years ago, last year, and this year, is $25,000, which is added in there, not as a specific fund, it goes into primarily what we have category professional fees or professional services. And so that goes to help, once we've run out, because it costs more than the $30,000 we get from the state. So that helps pay for professional services, like the defense attorney and the counselors. So that helps, and the social work that we have with us. And then, but the Rotary continues, they have a fund where they assist with scholarships. For example, we have a young man who needs to, he's, when he gets out of jail, needs to have a place to live that's a sober living environment. So there's sober living facilities that we refer people to, but it costs about $600 a month in rent. So for the first month, they can give a scholarship or a loan to someone to get them into that. So they have funds that they kind of work behind the scenes with us. They've also given scholarships for educational purposes for people, or assistance with getting driver's licenses. And with, every time there's a graduation, they provide the people who graduate a check for $250 as a, as a seed for them to get out and get going in the community. So they're very helpful continuing, although they don't have, like, annual chunks of money that they're giving us any longer.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Councilwoman Fuld?
Sorry, I have one last question. So what I understand is the state provides the funding for the employees of the court, and, but it's administered through Boulder City. You have a contract that states how that's administered?
No, the employees are handled as Boulder City employees through a memorandum of understanding that the courthouse with the city, and the only money that we get through the state is, well, we get the grant, the $30,000 grant for the Drug Court, and then we get these fees that actually we collect. Added in every fine, there's a facility fee, which is $10, I believe, $10, yeah, $10 on every fine goes into the facility fee. If a case goes into warrant, and the people have the ability to pay, there's a $100 collection fee gets added on to cover costs of going out and trying to find people. And part of our marshals, our two marshals, their salary, half of their salary is paid out of that collection fee, because they go out and round up people. And then the, I mentioned the facility, the administrative fee, $7 for every fine comes back to the court for use for technology. That's how we have our case management program, and that's how we'll get the new scanner. So, but the, but the actual employees are paid by the city.
Okay. So through that memorandum of understanding that you're Boulder City employees, I believe that had an expiration date coming up this summer. Do you expect that, will that automatically just renew and extend, or are you expecting any changes through that?
Expect no changes. It automatically renews.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Judge Miller. Mr. City Manager.
How come you only have two bullet points here?
Honorable Mayor and Council, hopefully I'm efficient.
That's one way of looking at it.
There you go. The city manager's budget, in essence, if you recall, last year, there was some reorganization took place. We established the Administrative Services Department, and also Communications was moved out into their own budget line item, so that we can see that. And this is basically just the remaining cleanup, where we are moving $4,000 from the city manager's budget into the communications or the BCTV arena to make sure that equipment purchases, such as, I don't know, a microphone, that sort of thing.
I was just going to, thinking that for $4,000, we ought to be able to get a pretty good wireless microphone.
Perhaps. But obviously, there's a number of other equipment items that we need to address, and I wanted to make sure that that money was available. And it was originally, you know, those monies were in the city manager's budget, and it's just appropriate to just finish transferring this money out. The second area is under Other Supplies, and it has to do with personnel costs. If you recall, prior to last year, HR Function was actually housed, as far as budget's concerned, under the city manager. That got moved out, and this is just the remaining monies that need to go over, so that we can truly capture all personnel-related costs, employee recognition program, if you will, and we moved that over to HR or Administrative Services. Any questions on the city manager's budget?
Councilwoman Fuld?
Yes. What falls under your professional line budget? I see that's almost tripling, or doubling at least. Do you see what?
I think, is that the $165,000? What that is, is because we have legislative session coming up, we do hire a lobbyist, and we make sure that that gets funded in this year and in the other incidental expenses. As you recall, the last legislative session, we actually had to go up there several times to make sure that we were well represented on supporting a couple of bills. But that's what that's about, and typically, you will see that come down in the non-legislative years.
When you talk about equipment for BCTV communications and stuff like that, have we gotten to that point where we've started to make determinations yet, or we're just, it's just that we, we've moved it over there and that's?
That's correct. You know, there were a couple of smaller equipment items, I just don't recall exactly the detail of what we were looking to purchase, but I think some of the equipment that we may have in the back, or maybe even downstairs, or servers, that sort of thing, that, and I said, you know, just move the money over there, because it was originally in the city manager's budget, it just did not get moved over last year.
I just think making sure that we do maintain great equipment, I think, having these videos up on YouTube now, having more of the commission committee meetings filmed, I think is, I hear about it all the time, people are very grateful that we have that service now to provide, so we need to continue doing that and make it better whenever we get the opportunity.
Right. So if there are no other questions about city manager's budget, I would like to move to the next slide, if the council's ready. Oh, there we go. I didn't even touch a button, just imagine this magical touch. Thank you. So just wanted to kind of relook at the general fund summary that was presented here over the last hour or so. So the big kind of message takeaway is that all of the fund balances are in the positive, so that's a good thing. Capital projects that were being proposed in the CIP are being funded through, in part, through the general fund. There's about $3.5 million that will be allocated from the general fund in order to pay for the capital improvement projects that were tentatively approved back in December. Additionally to that, we also have $4.7 million in capital projects from the voter-approved Capital Improvement Fund. So if you combine the general fund with the utility fund projects, that's where you get the $4.7 million, and you see that broken out as $1.262 from the general fund, and then utility projects is $3.445. Additionally, as you heard this time around, we're not looking to bring on a number of staff positions, but there are a couple of positions that will change the total FTE count for the city. So currently, we stand at 203.2 FTE full-time equivalents. That will raise to 206 if ultimately the council approves the positions that were being talked about, which is the two animal control positions from part-time to full-time, and then the building official. And then finally, there is, just wanted to reemphasize, because as you look at the budget, you go, oh, well, there is an increase of $2 or $3 million total, but that increase really is related to contractual increases that we're obligated to do, and that is the COLA increases, any PERS or other beneficiary, benefit-type increases that we're contractually obligated to do, and any other cost increases in any of the other contracts that we have, for example, golf course contracts and the likes. One other thing I do just want to leave with the council in terms of their general fund is that, you know, we are still very preliminarily looking at some reorganizational issues within the city, but those particular potential reorganizations should not increase the total amount of FTEs. It's more potentially of reclassifying certain positions in order to make sure that we're more adequately covering and being able to provide the services in the most effective and efficient way possible to the community. So with that, if you don't have any questions about that summary slide, then I will hand over the rest of this to HR that will talk about, is it HR or is it Finance that will talk about the FTEs?
I'm Bryce Bold, Administrative Services. Next few slides will expound upon personnel requests and associated costs. With this budget, we're recommending an increase of two full-time positions and one part-time, perishable position. Oh, I gotta do this. I don't have magic fingers like Al, so. Wrong way. Good. Okay, and this slide just shows that there are no changes in personnel requests for city managers, city attorneys, city clerk, IT, finance, or personnel. This shows, this slide will show that the police department is requesting an animal control, is requesting that animal control increase a part-time employee to a full-time employee, and a 19-hour employee to a perishable part-time employee. And also at the bottom, it shows that Community Development is requesting that full-time building official position. And then to wrap up the departments, no changes for utilities or the airport. And the associated costs, so these are, these next two slides will show you an estimated total cost over the current cost for the position, and these costs include the salary, the benefits. is offset by the eighty-five, but it's their total employee costs. That gets me to Diane unless you have questions on those personnel issues.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Bolt. Councilman Bridges?
Oh, just one question. Uh, shouldn't city council be five?
Uh, well, it, it's three-quarter, um, you're each point eight.
Oh.
So if I take five times point eight, I come up?
Does it show on the scale?
Yeah.
Yay. Okay, so point, oh, okay, that's why four.
Right. Um, and just for the council's edification, since you weren't, uh, most of you were not here last year, what we tried to do, um, in the la, is it last year's budget, was we looked at any positions, um, that were thirty-two-hour perceval positions were not being counted as any, uh, you know, position. And so what we did was we allocated point eight, uh, you know, full-time equivalent to, uh, any thirty-two-hour position. And so that's why now council is being shown in this, uh, fashion so that we can count and, uh, or account for, you know, the perceval positions that we have citywide.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Bolt at this time? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello again.
Hello. Okay. And so just to wrap up the governmental funds budget, so this is a timeline for the adoption of our twenty-one fiscal year budget. Um, this is today's, uh, February twelfth, which is our first city council work, um, special meeting. And on the twenty-fourth of February, we'll have our citizen workshop. And then on March eleventh, we'll have our second city council meeting. On April fifteenth, we have to submit our tentative budget to the state. And on April twenty-second, we'll have our third, um, city council meeting to review the final budget. And then on five twenty-six, at the city council meeting, the final budget will be approved as well as adoption of the capital improvement program, adoption of the pay classifications, FTEs and COLAs. And then on June first, we must submit it to the state. So that wraps up our government tie.
Uh, Counsel, if I may just, um, just, uh, add a couple more pieces of information for your, uh, information as to how this process will work, since, uh, for most of you, I think this will be your first budget process.
Also, in the next one with city councils, when we'll go over the CIP, if that's what Al's adding?
No.
Okay.
Actually, um, just wanted to mention that the second city council workshop, uh, is scheduled, uh, if the council needs it. If the council does not, uh, feel that you need it and that you can get, move forward with the final budget approval, then we wouldn't forego that. Uh, the, uh, March or April fifteenth tentative budget that must be provided by the state, that is not a budget that is, uh, requires a council action. That is an administrative budget. It's really a bunch of state forms, I, I think, uh, pages of, uh, forms. And all it is, is basically a, a budget, a proposed budget that we are looking at, uh, as the city. Uh, what is required under, uh, the, uh, the interest is, is that the governing body must approve a budget that will be submitted to the state and it must approve the budget within the last two, uh, weeks of the month of May. And then we must, uh, provide that budget to the state on, is it June first? Uh, so I just want to make sure that you understand that process, um, but we wanted to make sure that the timeline was built in such a way that, um, uh, that it does allow for the council to have additional discussion if you, uh, feel that, that is warranted and particularly if there maybe there's some kind of issues or concerns that come out of the public meeting, uh, so that we could share that with you as well if you need that, uh, that additional clarification. So, uh, with that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from the council regarding timeline at this time?
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks. The, do I just say?
I believe we're on to item number two, uh, which is, uh, for possible action to receive presentation and discussion of the twenty-twenty-one proprietary funds operation and maintenance budget and provide staff with direction for any changes, so.
So, part two. So this is the proposed annual budget for the proprietary funds. Whoops. Okay. So, to be more transparent, we're using the word proprietary and enterprise fund throughout this presentation and you'll also see in your workbook, it says proprietary funds. So proprietary just means activities that involve business-like interactions and enterprise fund is a type of proprietary fund. So if you were to look at our CAFR, you would see proprietary fund and this is just to try to make this more transparent and understandable. And then an enterprise fund is any activity for which external users are charged a fee for goods or services. So really an enterprise fund should be self-sustaining in a business. So the six enterprise funds for the city is the airport, the utility administration fund, the electric fund, water, sewer, and the landfill. This is our new executive summary for our proprietary funds. It summarizes their budgets. Oops. So the proposed airport budget for next year is about one point eight million and the proposed combined utility fund budget is about thirty-seven million. Currently, the mandatory, um, reserves for the airport are fully funded for fiscal year twenty-twenty. This includes a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar emergency capital reserve and the twenty percent for operating. Also for fiscal year twenty-twenty, all the utilities mandatory reserves are fully funded, which include an emergency capital reserve of five million dollars, a rate stabilization reserve of three million dollars, and the twenty percent operating reserves for each of the utilities. It also includes, which is not mandatory, but, uh, RDA utility reserve of nine hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, which is money set aside for only utility, RDA utility projects. And there's also the landfill, um, closure and landfill construction fee reserves, which are only used for landfill capital improvements or closure. So important changes from last year, so the budget, the Boulder City Finance Department is striving each year to be more transparent with the city's finances and this includes the enterprise funds. Changing the method used from interfund reimbursements to the general fund, from transfers in, transfers out, to the interfund line item expenses credits is our, us trying to be more transparent. So that's, you'll see in each of the enterprise funds, like the utility admin fund, um, a line item for reimbursed salary expense and then you'll see the credits with the correlating departments in the general fund. Utility budgets have decreased from prior year due to completed studies that were purchased in twenty-twenty that aren't needed in fiscal year twenty-one. Fiscal year twenty-one, enterprise budgets include asset depreciation for each of the enterprise funds as this is required by the government accounting standards boards, which otherwise known as GASB. This is also required by NRS three-five-four-five-one-seven, when the NRS is Nevada revised statutes, which is administered by the Nevada Department of Taxation. What is depreciation? Depreciation accounts for the wear and tear on business assets over time. Each year a certain amount of depreciation is written off, the book value, uh, an asset is reduced. Depreciation is a non-cash expense that does not affect cash flow, but is required, like, operating expense by the, by GASB and by the state. So the upcoming rate study will use cash flow. It will not use depreciation in that study. Depreciation will not raise rates. So again, depreciation shows when additional revenue should be put aside to replace an asset in the future. So an example of depreciation, let's say you have a machine you have to use for work. It's fifty thousand dollars. It only works for five years. After five years, it's obsolete. So every year you need to put aside ten extra thou, ten thousand dollars of revenue that you can't spend, so at the end of the five years, you have fifty thousand dollars. So I just want to read it. I know depreciation's confusing, so I just want to say it one more time. Depreciation shows what additional revenue should be put aside to replace the assets in the future. And it's non-cash. Okay. So starting with the airport, where does the airport money come from? About ten thousand dollars comes from license and permits. Eighty thousand comes from the fuel tax. Point eight-two million comes from rents and royalties, miscellaneous revenue from about eight thousand dollars, and use of fund balance of point nine-one million. It's a total, uh, budget of about one point eight million. So where does the airport money go? Salaries is point three-three million. Benefits is point one-seven million. Contracts is just under a hundred thousand dollars. Maintenance is point one-one million. Miscellaneous operating expenses is point one-one million and depreciation's one million dollars. So I know one million dollars sounds very high for the airport, but the airport assets are very expensive and the airport, so going back to depreciation, so its revenues that should be set aside to buy assets in the future, replace assets in the future. So the, uh, airport is very unique in that most of its assets, um, can have the FAA matching grant, so ninety-two point seven-five percent of each of these assets is going to be assisted by the FAA and the city's portion of the replacements, only about six So I will turn that over to Willie.
So I only have a, a couple of, um, council members and Mayor Pro Tem, Willie Williamson, Airport Manager, and I also have, uh, Marissa, my Assistant Airport Manager. So the two things I have is, uh, the first one is, is, uh, control tower and, uh, that's paramount for safety reasons. And, uh, so we're looking at, we're moving that back up to front and center on the, on the, uh, capital improvement plan. And, uh, that would be an FAA-funded project. So, uh, like Angela just said, about ninety-two percent funded by the FAA and the remainder funded by the airport. There's really not a whole lot else I can say about that other than it really is a critical situation. We, it's not an expansion of the airport. It's rather, uh, backfilling a void that we have, a safety void that we have. And, uh, you know, I've been here for four months now and I've seen a variety of really critical situations occur. And, uh, so that, that's why I chose to move that up to front and center. The, uh, the second thing is our fuel system. Our fuel system is antiquated and, uh, the underground fuel tanks need to be brought up, uh, to above-ground fuel tanks. And there's a variety of different ways that that can be funded. And, uh, so we're looking at, at working with fuel providers and a variety of other situations so that we can come out with a net zero on the airport budget. I, I think this is possible, you know, it, it, it's one of those situations where working as a business, you can actually, uh, manipulate systems to where it can be, uh, cost advantage, or well, maybe not an advantage, but a net zero if you're really lucky and that's what we're striving for. And, uh, those are really the only two modifications that are coming up. We don't have really good numbers on those yet, uh, but we're looking for, uh, in the vicinity of seven hundred thousand dollars for the, um, control tower for this phase of it, twenty-twenty-one. And it's about six hundred thousand that we're looking at for the fuel system and, uh, looking to get that offset, uh, you know, with the industry funding it. So, questions?
Questions from council at this time?
Yeah, I do have a question. You had mentioned, um, in a previous meeting about the, uh, fuel farm outsource. Is there any likelihood of finding an entity that is willing to do that? I know that, that seemed sort of out on the horizon somewhere.
Well, that's, that horizon's getting much closer. Um, we, we are going to be, we've got a couple of, uh, higher priority items that, uh, we're working with city council on right now, but, uh, that's coming up right next to that and we're going to be looking at, uh, a variety of ways we can outsource that. Um, and that, that all gets circled into funding the replacement fuel tank. Hopefully we can combine that all together and make it one really nice little package, but, um, we'll have to be doing a, a little bit of homework here in the next month.
But there are companies that, that do that or?
Yes ma'am.
You know, okay, great, thank you.
Sometimes it's multiple companies that join together to do that, but, but yes, that, that is done and it's been done in the past at this airport as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. Uh, yes, uh, I'm very excited about this, uh, the control tower because, uh, with the helicopters and the skydivers, it's inevitable that we're going to have some sort of a tragedy. Uh, and I'm glad that you've moved that up because I think it's very, very important. Having had a plane and my son's a pilot and flown into some small airports where, you know, we, we didn't have any instruments and you just by sight, if it's somebody at twelve o'clock or three o'clock or whatever, uh, now you've got everyone at every clock, all around the clock. So I, I'm happy about that. Back to the fuel farm that, uh, Councilwoman Bridges mentioned, and I know we've talked about that many times, uh, and I think we've had a, some, a company that actually did that before.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, and you kind of indicated that it wasn't that profitable for the city to be in it. I'm wondering if, um, maybe, and I'm sure you've already thought about this, but maybe when we go out for the third party, maybe they can supply the underground tanks and take a lesser, we take a lesser lease amount from them, so I'd like to see.
That is, uh, one of the things that we're considering is, uh, having, having that whole, whole situation, uh, taken care of by one or, or two companies that are joined together, uh, where we get the, the above-ground fuel tank, we get somebody to manage the fuel farm and that type of thing. And, uh, the, yeah, the, the fuel farm does not really make us enough money, uh, because of the way it's structured right now. There's money in fuel, I mean, but the way we have our, our situation structured right now, it, it just doesn't, uh, work for the city to be in that business. And, um, there's also, there's also private businesses that I'm sure are going to be willing to take that.
Thank you. And I would like to, um, say personally to you that I know you've been under a lot of pressure. I certainly appreciate everything that you've done and I think all of the council members appreciate your input and, uh, look forward to having a good resolution here. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Um, okay, I guess I'll, I'll go ahead. Um, and I'll make sure that we, we keep here where we're talking about the budget, um, but, you know, we do have a lot of things coming up here with the airport leases, potentially, uh, stuff like that. Right now what we're looking at doesn't include any of the, any, uh, potential increases right now that we might see down the road from any, based on any decisions that might come, right? Right now, this is just where we're at and moving forward, correct?
Yes sir. They, this is, uh, this does not take into account any changes that are in the future. Uh, that would, we, we don't know.
I just wanted to make, make that clear so, um, everybody was aware. Um, you know, because for me, obviously, this is something that as we talk about, we'll likely be seeing, uh, uh, some changes here, potentially in, in one way or another. Um, so it's just something that, you know, we're going to have to keep our, our eye on when, as we talk about this moving forward with other workshops and stuff like that, knowing that, you know, this is, there's, there's a lot of deadlines coming up, you know, not only, including the budget, including the leases, everything like that, so we are going to be, uh, you know, it's just something that we're going to have to continue looking at and discussing and, and, you know, keeping our eye on everything.
Sure, I believe that is correct.
Are there any other questions from council at this time? Thank you Willie.
Thank you.
All right, who's next?
Me.
You again.
Okay. And how Bryce mentioned earlier, so the books you have in front of you today are the current FTEs that are in twenty-twenty going forward to twenty-twenty-one for both the airport So the utility enterprise funds, there's five of them. There's the admin fund, the electric fund. There's the admin fund, the electric fund, the water sewer, and the landfill. So starting with the admin fund, the admin fund really doesn't make its own revenue, so the four other utilities pay into it. And where does the admin money go? So .9, .9 million of it goes to administration. Central services is 1. Oops, thank you, is 1.27 million, which includes that inter-fund reimbursement. So if you look in the utility central services, you'll see a line item saying inter-fund reimbursement expense, which is then credited to the general fund. And then billing collections is about .81 million. Depreciation is $500. So total admin budget, about 3.3 million. So the electric fund, where does the money come from? So charges for services is about $17.4 million. Miscellaneous revenue is .13 million. Transfers in from the voter-approved capital improvement fund is 1.9 million, and the use of fund balance is .65 million. So the total operating budget for next year for electric is about $20 million. Okay, where does the electric money go? So 3.5 million of that goes to operations. 6 million of it goes just to purchase power. Non-electric cost is about .24 million. Capital projects for fiscal year 2021 is 7.8 million for electric. Transfers to the utility admin fund is 1.66 million, and depreciation is $900,000. So again, depreciation is non-cash. It won't affect the rate study, it won't affect rates. It's just the revenue that should be being set aside to purchase, re, to replace the assets in the future. The water fund, where does the water fund money come from? So charge for services is close to $10 million. An infrastructure sales tax is about $1 million, which can only be used for capital improvement projects and for debt. Transfers in from the capital improvement voter, voter-approved capital improvement fund is $1 million, and use of fund balance is close to $2 million. So the water budget for next year is approximately 13.9 million. Where does the water money go? So operations is about $1.66 million. Purchasing the water is just under $5 million. Next year's capital projects for water is 1.35 million. Debt service is 2.22 million. Transfers to the admin fund is just under $1 million. Amortization is 1.8 million and depreciation's 1.3 million. So both amortization and depreciation are non-cash, they won't affect the rate study. They're just writing down the depreciation and the, the amortization is a prepaid debt we did several years ago for, to Southern Nevada Water Authority. So for accounting purposes, for writing off that debt early, we couldn't finance, you can't pay off debt early because it would make your books look bad if you pay off $10 million. So what they do, they get, had it go on our books as a prepaid asset, so every year, based on our water consumption, it's reducing. So right now, it's about $6 million, so this will stay on our books for about another three months, three years. And so wastewater, the wastewater money comes from customer charges of approximately 1.85 million. Transfers in from the voter-approved capital improvement fund is about 2.24 million, and the use of fund balance is about $5,000. So the wastewater budget for next year is about 2.1 million. Where does the wastewater money go? So operations is just under $1 million. Capital improvement projects for next year is .24 million. Transfers to the utility admin fund is .29 million, and depreciation is .6 million. And again, depreciation's non-cash, it's just revenue that should be set aside to replace the assets in the future. So total budget of about $2 million. So landfill, so the landfill money comes from 1.27 from customer charges. .32 million comes from restricted revenue, so this is the construction fee and the landfill closure fee, the $1.50 fee that residents would see on their bill. And transfers in from the cap, voter-approved capital improvement plan of .3 million. So the landfill budget next year is approximately 1.8 million. So the landfill money, where does it go? So it goes to operations of .05 million and contractual services of 1.1 million. So it's a big difference because we hire out the management of the landfill. The capital projects are approximately .3 million, and transfers to the utility admin fund is .08 million. Depreciation is $16,000, and the total operating expense budget is 1.5 million, which has a small surplus compared to revenues, so that will sit in the fund balance to be used for future years. And again, I just want to say the 16,000 depreciation is non-cash, will not affect rates, it's just there to set aside revenue for future to replace the assets. And with that, I will let the utility director talk about his budget.
Thank you. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and, and City Council. My name is Dennis Porter. I'm the utility director for the, for Boulder City. For the record, this year, we're actually lowering our overall utility budget, not, not increasing it like it did in my first year, just slightly. So from a, from an overall utility perspective, with regard to the utility department as a whole and the administrative budget, we are not asking for any new positions. You'll see that unless there, and that is that we are currently going through an analysis to bringing in some of the lower voltage, medium voltage, construction projects and seeing if there's savings there. So just want to let you know that we're doing that analysis, you know, basically as we speak. We looked at it from a very high level, that gave us enough information to say we need to do a little deeper dive, because it does look like there's some significant, potentially significant savings there. The VERF has been added to each utility, so that VERF, it's, that'll be a separate VERF from the general fund VERF to keep the color of those monies separate between enterprise and the general, and the general funds. And of course, our focus with all the utilities is to invest in the city's infrastructure and make sure we're owning, operating, and maintaining as effectively as possible. The electrical operating budget, we do anticipate a slight decrease in power purchases. We anticipate that for the next couple of years, so that's positive. If we do, or if we are successful in procuring, procuring solar power from our upcoming solar project from Black Hills South through the Southern Nevada Water Authority, that would decrease those energy purchases. This wouldn't be in FY '21, but in '22 potentially, if they get that construction complete by then, by approximately $150,000 a year. The water operating budget, as you know, or, or may not know, last year, we added about 200,000 or 250,000, I can't remember exactly, for our water and sewer condition assessment, which is ongoing right now. We've lowered that to $50,000 for this year. There is a required EPA mandated vulnerability assessment and emergency response program that does have to be done in FY '21. Our water purchases increased this year, and this is a water purchase from SNWA increased 2.8%, but overall, we were able to decrease the budget just slightly. On the operating side, for wastewater, we, again, we had money in there for the water and sewer condition assessment. We are keeping a budget of $50,000 in technical services, and that is solely in the event that we determine that we need some professional services. It's not something that's specifically planned for at this time. As an example, if we decide to attempt to get a sewer model done, we would take it out of this budget. And overall, we decreased that budget by 10%. And then last but not least, we did take a hard look again at the landfill operating budget, and were able to decrease that one slightly, just by 3%. So with that, I'll answer any questions, or I'll attempt to.
Yeah, any council, any questions from council at this time? Councilman?
Yes. Have we done anything more on the wastewater and trying to find different uses for it, you know, so we could maybe not be, so we could be environmentally safe with that?
So the, probably where we're putting the most energy at this point in time is, the Southern Nevada Water Authority is, is currently going through their Integrated Resource Committee, Advisory Committee. Embedded in that is a project that SNWA would, would design and construct. That would take our effluent, pump it up over into Henderson. Henderson would treat it to a higher quality, and that return flow credit would then be available to Southern Nevada. They are going through that process as we speak, so that is ongoing. That is something that eventually would come back to the council. Obviously, there would be a number of, they require our property, our right-of-way. It would be inter-agreements, inter-local agreements between SNWA and City of Boulder City and City of Henderson, so it would take a lot of effort and energy and time, but that is one of the solutions we're looking at, at this time.
And, and you haven't factored that cost in because you don't know what that cost would be?
It would be an SNWA-sponsored project.
Okay, thank you. I also have a couple of other questions for you. Well, I have a remark. I would like to see things paid off early, even if the books look bad. Okay.
Yes, and we are looking at including some additional debt service principle in the, within the rate study itself, to see how that affects.
I don't want to go into a lot of detail, but the depreciation is, is a little confusing to me because it goes from everything from 500 to 900,000 to 1 million to 16. So how, how do you determine depreciate, how is depreciation determined?
I'm gonna let the finance people answer that.
Yeah.
So all the assets are given a useful life, and depending on their useful life is what they'll be depreciated, and it's all over the boards because the infrastructure for each utility is different. Like, electric has a lot more than the landfill, and that's why they're so different. And the admin fund has that minimal depreciation because it just, there's certain fixed assets we haven't been able to move out yet to the correct utility. So did that answer your question at all, or help?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
But I did want to say in terms of the effluent, that's about a 25, the 25 million, is that what you said?
25 and some change, yeah.
25 and some change, and all of that cost would be picked up by the SNWA. That, that project does not cost Boulder City any money.
Councilman Folda, any questions at this time? I guess when we're looking at this, you talked a little bit about the utility advisory committee. Obviously, you know, part of, you know, the reason I think they were put in there was to create a little bit more transparency to this whole process, where we put the money and stuff like that. So obviously, we, we are going to want to hear from the utility advisory committee. Whereabouts are they in, in that process right now as they're, as they're reviewing?
So the main focus, it really is the capital plan, just because the capital plan drives the rates more than the operating budget does. So taking a hard dive into that, and then they just saw the operating, they've seen, you know, the FY '20 operating budget earlier on in the year, and they just saw the, this draft operating budget last Wednesday. So they've also saw some of the information on our analysis with regards to staffing and bringing those construction projects in-house.
Obviously, you know, time is always of the essence when we, when we talk about these things, deadlines, all that sort of stuff. So making sure that, you know, the utility advisory committee is given the appropriate amount of time to review, to come to council so that, you know, just in case we had any further questions or clarifications we were looking for. Not, not that we don't trust your work either, but, you know, part of the reason was for the community to also have that transparency as well, so.
Absolutely, and that schedule is very tight as well, just with regard to getting information back from the condition assessments on electrical as well as the water and sewer.
All right, any other questions then? Is that the end then of this presentation at this time?
So just to recap, the, the enterprise funds have the exact same budget adoption schedule as do all the governmental funds. So today's meeting's the 12th, then we'll have the next citizen workshop, and if needed, the two council workshops, the 15th, the budget, April 15th, the tentative budget still needs to be submitted to state, and our final budget with the capital improvement will be sent to the state on June 1st.
Actually, Mr. Porter, I, I did have a couple more questions. Sorry, not to, not to bring you back up. With regards to the rate study that we are doing right now, how, how long do we, when do we see that? What's the timeline on that?
So the next step in that would be the cost of directed, what we call the cost of service, and so we'll be having a workshop in March to go through that with, with the results from the cost of service study and some discussions that would occur with the advisory committee. Then they would get into the rate design schedule. That can go rapidly, or that can take an extended period of time, but that would, we're, that's kind of where that would go. I think we would know, hopefully know well before July 1st whether a rate increase is required or not. That will help us kind of get through the, the rate study portion, because you wouldn't necess, if there's no rate increase, we wouldn't have to have anything ready for the budget. That being said, there could be a rate design philosophy change that could impact the budget, or could impact the customer, I should say, depending on how those end up or what they look like. So we're just gonna have to work through that process.
And then as things change, you know, like you said, it could, you know, it could go quickly, it could take quite some time, so we could be past the budgeting process and all that sort of stuff to take into those considerations. So we can, we would have to make any changes or amendments at that time, moving forward beyond that.
Right, and what I would say with regards to the rate studies, we want to do this right, so it's more important to make sure it's right than it gets forced into that schedule.
Right, and trying to cram that into the budgeting process, I think, is probably not appropriate because we want to be sure that we're doing it in a transparent way for everybody to see. And then I'll just, I just want to say that I think it's really great that we are potentially looking into getting actual solar power so we can decrease some of our purchasing needs. It's always been something that the citizens have always talked about, we've got all these solar panels out there, why aren't we using solar energy? So I think it's good that we're starting there, it's just the first step. I think, I hope we really need to look into doing more of that in the future, but I, I think it is a great first step.
I will say this, we probably won't, and there's a reason why, is because the allotment of Hoover that we have kind of prevents us from purchasing more because it's used for the peak periods, kind of like our Hoover is used for peak periods. So I'm not gonna say there's not a possibility, but it's gonna be diminished over time.
But also.
Up until the point when Hoover costs go up, and then it may make more sense, plus battery storage, so, you know, five years from now, I could be totally wrong, and we could be buying more renewables.
I think, yeah, I think we should always be looking towards the future, absolutely. So, all right, any other, any other questions before we move on then? Councilman Folda.
I had one. So this is something we didn't really get into, is our reserve funds, and, not for utilities, we did that, but for the general fund, and just, could you explain that and, and where we're at with the reserve fund for, for the general fund? Am I allowed to write now? Does it matter? No? Okay. So I didn't know if I was talking out of turn. So the general funds are fully reserved, are fully, the mandatory reserves for the general fund are fully funded at this point. So the 20% operating reserve is for general fund, more cops, crime prevention, and the RDA, and the general fund also has their emergency capital reserve fully funded.
Okay, so, because what, you know, in the big overview, we have the exact same coming in as going out, and so can you explain that?
Are you talking general fund? So if you look in past years, it, so to have a balanced budget, that's exactly what we do. We take the revenues and we offset it with the expenses. Throughout the year, hopefully, we, our expenses aren't that high, so our revenues are higher. And so at the end of the year, any of that extra revenue would just stay in the fund balance. But the reason for the budget is to have it balanced, just to show that any expense that we plan on incurring, that we have the funds to pay for it.
Right, so you have it, so you use it, I understand that, but there's not really a tool or mechanism right now besides what's not being used, what was budgeted for, for any kind of savings out of?
For the general fund? At this moment, we aren't using savings up for the general fund. In fact, the general fund, we're using. In fact, the general fund, we're using fund balance to support the capital improvement projects for the general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else then? Nope? Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protim and the rest of council members. Just wanted to just, again, just highlight the fact that during the budget process, at the very end, when you approve the final budget, there is a series of things that you will be approving. And I just wanted to make sure that you are, that you understand that. And that is, first is you're gonna be approving the general fund budget, operations and maintenance, which is what you heard in part today. Then you will also be approving the enterprise fund budget, which is what you heard as well today. You will do the final approval of the capital improvement plan that you tentatively approved back in December. If there are any substantial changes between the tentative approval in December and May, we will bring that back to you and make sure that you're aware of those as well. You will also be approving the classification and salary schedule. That is done on an annual basis to make sure that the classification and the pay plan for each classification is updated. And you say, well, why is that? Every year, there's normally a COLA, and so now you have to change the rate of pay so that it's reflective of the new COLA system that goes in effect on July 1st. So that will be part of the classification and the salary schedule that you will approve. And that is built into the budgets as well, and you've heard that throughout the presentation today. Also, if there are any new job classes, you will approve those as well. So for example, building official, potentially, if there's not an existing job class that has already been approved, that you would approve the new job class with its corresponding salary schedule as well. In addition to that, if there are any changes or new FTE increases, you will approve those as well. You heard me make a comment about although there may not be FTE changes that may be coming as we look at some organizational changes, particularly in one new department, I shouldn't say new department, the new department head is looking at some organizational changes. That should be a hint. Then, you know, anything that comes out of that, it may not increase the FTE, but it may bring back, say, a position. It may, you know, change a particular job class. You will approve those as well. So that overall, you're approving not only the dollars, but you're also approving any personnel changes as well. So just wanted to make sure that you are aware of those, you know, since I think most of you have not sat through a budget process before.
Okay, then I guess we will move then on to our final item, which is public comment. Public comments will be for five minutes. They can be on any subject matter at this time. So at this time, I will open it to comment. Mr. Volz?
Good morning, council. For the record, Fred Volz, there are a number of initial reactions to and questions about this city budget. The animal shelter has needed the extra people proposed for years. Its operations have been inadequately funded ever since the former manager, Mary Jo, engaged in mass killing of unwanted, abused, and injured animals. One of the problems shows up at only $10,000 to cover critical spay neuter and trap neuter release programs that have consistently proven their worth in reducing unwanted animals. Funding needs to be significantly increased for these two initiatives. I have a series of questions that I'll ask in rapid order here. The first is, why does Boulder City need a communications department for almost $200,000? Can't department heads and the city manager communicate with the public and press when necessary? In the police department budget, there's $250,000 of other on line 5103. What does this proposed expenditure represent? There's no explanation, no footnote. Another question, should we have a fitness center in competition with at least four private businesses within Boulder City that cost taxpayers $85,000 plus? And why aren't the two golf courses enterprise funds? Why isn't city hall administrative overhead being passed back to the airport and the two golf courses on the same basis as the utility system? Shouldn't we be exploring either the sale or lease of the two golf courses to companies that know how to run such operations, say Cascada, for example? The same approach should be explored for the municipal airport with the Clark County Department of Airports. Speaking of the utility process, we've been trying to figure out the nature and location of holdover funds since last September for incomplete and undone capital projects to the tune of over $20 million. We still aren't there yet with a unified spreadsheet that fully explains what money remains from prior fiscal years by project, which clearly impacts utility rates. And is there a utility sinking fund balance with an actual dollar amount in it for depreciation? And if so, what is it? Additionally, the city does not have the ability to spend all of the utility capital project money it has been appropriating in a given fiscal year. On page 11 of the government funds executive summary, there's a vague listing of at least $600,000 of community grants with no breakout between in-kind, such as free office space at city facilities, and actual cash payments from public funds. Some of the monies, such as for emergency aid, can be justified because the city has no health and human services function. But giving free services or cash to the likes of the AKC Kennel Association and the Red Mountain Music Company, among many others, makes all Boulderites contribute to organizations they may not want to support with their tax money. That there are no numbers for various churches in the interfaith council, which violates the church and state separation that we supposedly have, seems to be a major irregularity as well. The salaries being paid to the city manager, city clerk, and city attorney are substantially higher than what their counterparts receive in comparably sized Nevada cities such as Fernley and Mesquite. And that begs the question, when will a credible compensation study be performed for these particular positions? Another question, does the city need to spend $100,000 on a four-month Carson City lobbyist when it belongs to the State Association of Cities and Counties with its own lobbyists and also an assemblyman and a state senator to represent our interests? Another question, do all video monitoring systems in the proposed budget covering city facilities feed into the police dispatch for 24/7 security? Apparently, some of them do not, from what I've been able to determine. And finally, we need to rebrand animal control to animal services. We don't call the police department the police control department, or the fire department the fire control department. Let's make the animal services department name friendly and welcoming, not regressive. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments at this time from the public? All right, hearing and seeing none. With that, then, the meeting is adjourned. Do I get to run over there and bang the gavel?